We are running late already, so let's just get started quickly. But before I start, I also want to thank you the best regards of Magnus Simren, my co-chair, who unfortunately got sick and is not able to join us today. And also for those of you who know her from Beatrix, I should also say hello. So Genua actually started out as a coast action and is chaired by myself and Magnus Simren. And when we started, we were just five countries involved. And during the running time of the action, the whole thing grew to 21 countries in Europe and three overseas countries. And actually, the purpose of the creation of a pan-European interdisciplinary network to nail down genetic factors in irritable bowel syndrome was to nail down genetic factors. And involved in the actions were people from the clinic, from different disciplines as well as from basic sciences. And the major objectives were harmonized and standardized case control definition. The main task was to establish a phenotyping tool as gold standard to define cases and controls, not only for genetic studies, but also for microbiota studies, which could also, of course, be used for any kind of clinical studies. And we established a repository where we store all the information generated during the action. And one of the goals was also to establish a database to store the data, but we didn't get to that, I have to admit, but we are working on that. And what we did is that we also established a protocol for pan-European bio-banking, which we set up. And I will come to that again later, where we store not only phenotypic information, but also blood samples for genetics and epigenetics, tissue samples and stool samples, with the purpose to nail down genetic factors, epigenetic factors, so modulation of genes and also metagenomics, so the gene set of the little box living in our guts. And we had four working groups, which had different tasks, as you can see here, definition of the patient and controls, then definition of quantitative traits as intermediate phenotypes and then a working group on molecular genetics and epigenetics and on microbiota research. And those first two established guidelines for the phenotyping tool in collaboration with the other groups. And also the protocol for the bio-banking and SOPs were set up. And everything has been implemented in a repository on our website. And those who are interested can register there and can get hold of that information, of course. And we did actually quite well. We were able to publish more than 20 publications, a few reviews and a position paper. And the reviews are included in this booklet, which was in your conference bag, which you may have seen already. Then there was quite some exchange between different countries in terms of staff, which also fostered the exchange of methods and techniques in terms of short-term scientific missions, where you could send people to another place to learn a certain technique or to get a project started. And the pain repository in the US, which is run by Emily Meyer, joined also the action and they are also using the Genua protocol in the future. And we had some workshops and international conferences in conjunction with Genua, two training schools, one spring conference and a final conference, which was held in Heidelberg. And all that is also written in the brochure. And we are an ES&amp;M endorsed initiative. And yeah, a major purpose of the action was also to get funding for future collaboration. And in this respect, we weren't successful yet. We keep trying hard to get money from the European Commission and also in other programs. So far, we had written and submitted three proposals within Horizon 2020. Two of them even got to the second stage. The last one this year unfortunately failed. And one of the justifications by the reviewers was again that IBS is not a life-threatening condition. And we are really fed up always getting that response. And I think those of you who are in IBS research are exactly what I, are exactly aware about what I'm talking about here. And this is something I'd like to address a little bit later also, because I think we really have also to change gear and to change the strategy here. Instead of getting more and more frustrated, getting no's on that level, to go further and be creative and try to generate money with other, yeah, with using other channels. But we are really proud that we got awarded the UEG LINK Award. And I will tell you something about that later on, what that is about. And just to let you know, this took three submissions to get it through. So we are this never give up type of people. So we will keep going also with the other proposals. And of course, we keep also going for future Horizon program calls. As you may know, the Coast Action ended in April 2016. And yet, for the moment, it's an endorsed event of the ES&amp;M. And they will fund us to keep the network running until May 2018, because the worst thing which could have happened is that everything now falls apart, because we are a really nice bunch of very motivated people. And we'd like to get that really going. What I would like to share today with you is, in the meantime, we had to submit a coast final achievement report. This has, in the meantime, been evaluated and approved. And our action rapporteur was van de Trus from Maastricht, from the Netherlands. I can't go into detail, but I have to tell you, we got a really nice evaluation report. And those of you who are interested can just look that up on the website. We included it onto the website, because I think this is really a nice result. Please go there, especially the ones who were involved in the action and have a look, yeah, how the evaluation went. So our mission and our goals with Genua Reloaded is, are of course, to have update meetings like the one today in conjunction with meetings where neurogastro is a major focus. Our gastroenterology is a focus. Our mission is also to promote and to propose epigenetic sessions during those meetings. Of course, to support young investigators interested into the topic. And of course, to keep the Genua network and the Genua website and the repository updated. And we always upload new findings. So it's a really nice database. If you are interested, just go there and register. And of course, we spread any news. We now have established a newsletter and a news site on the website. We disseminate the outcomes of our action members to the scientific communities and also patient support groups. This is all implemented in the website. And our goal is not only to lobby for genetics in IBS, but in general to lobby for IBS, that this is a really crucial disorder, which should no longer be neglected, and thereby to increase the awareness about IBS and its flaws. So I already talked about the major outcome brochure and you might have seen it. It's included in the conference bags. And another thing which we established is a leaflet with a key message, what our action or our network is about, for patients and patient organizations and interested groups. And this has been translated so far into 17 languages of genuine member states. And the plan is, and I just shortly want to share that with you, that the future plans are that we want to distribute that to our management committee members, that they get in touch with patient organizations and national contact points to make these aware about our group who is really interested, to change the situation and to really do research into that direction, not only genetics, because we have people from all the disciplines in our network. And I think this is really crucial. And I also told you in the beginning that not only me, we are really fed up getting no's from funding organizations. And we are currently thinking of, yeah, trying getting money via other channels, like via the lobbying and making people aware with the social media. So very soon, we will join Twitter and Facebook with Genua to promote what we want to do. And we are thinking of maybe, yeah, establishing a foundation. This is not clear yet. I'm exploring options here, that we are able to collect money. And yeah, also, yeah, just to inform patients and other groups who might then get interested to fund us. So this is what the plans we have for the near future. But we will keep you updated and send that out in our next newsletter. So we will continue with the implementation of this basic recruitment protocol at additional sites. And at the moment, there are 27 European countries and three overseas countries, which are interested to recruit patient and control samples for respective studies. And the main mission is to perform large multi-center studies to nail down genetics and epigenetics, but we also have microbiota in it. I will go into that tomorrow. There will be another section where we report on the major findings so far in more detail. So those of you who are interested, just please come and join. And then you get a little bit more also about the scientific content. I don't have enough time today to address all this. And what I can share with you is, so far, the protocol is approved in 10 countries. And eight countries are still pending. And Cyprus and Finland, we still don't have clinical colleagues. So if you know someone there who might be interested, please make them aware about our actions. So this is the status quo in countries like Serbia and also Malta and Bosnia-Herzegovina. We don't have the protocol implemented yet. Why is that? Because we, of course, need to have translations of all the inventories. So we are not only assessing the gastrointestinal phenotype of the patients, but also the comorbid phenotypes. And quite some of the questionnaires have not been translated in these, into these languages. And this is what the LINK project is about, and I will come to that later. So I already just said, in the meantime, the member states grew up to 27. So recently, these countries joined us. And one of the major outputs was the phenotyping tool. And we even had a nice publication published last year in Neurogastroenterology and Motility about how we think phenotyping in IBS could be improved for multi-center studies. And we put actually all the information related to that also on our website, because it was quite an effort also for us to get hold of the questionnaires in the different languages and we put all the information there. So everyone who's interested, have a look there. You can find all the information on that side of our website. What is really nice is that other countries like Canada and the US colleagues there started to get interested how we do phenotyping in Genua. And they are planning also to use our standard in the future for multi-center studies. So Magnus Simren, my co-chair, joined a hearing last year of the NIH for a special program doing, in general, research on functional GI disorders. And yeah, so he was there to introduce the Genua protocol to them, which is really nice. And as you might have realized, also here at the meeting, Mirja Naja-Lidjic Doyanovic had a talk also about the gut microbiome and IBS and our approach to clinical phenotyping, which I think is quite nice. And I know that a little bird told me that Daisy Yonkers, we also have a talk at the UAW VCA Barcelona also about the Genua approach in IBS phenotyping, which I think is really great. So I already told you, we are spreading news of the action. We put everything on the website, but also we sent that out via newsletters. Last year, we had two. And this year, we will prepare one, which is supposed to be sent out after that meeting, also to update all the colleagues who didn't have the opportunity to join us today. And a few words to the website. I think it's really great that within the running time of the Coast Action, we had to establish a website. And this is really a nice information tool. And what I'm really proud of is that, in the beginning, we didn't, unfortunately, we didn't check the access rates. But since October 2015, we are watching who's looking us up. And at that time, we had 11,000 IP addresses registered. Or we could track 11,000. And in the meantime, there are more, it's nearly 39,000, I realize, tonight. It's even more, yeah, it's smaller than this. And yeah, you can see that it's really growing. More and more people are getting aware of us. And I think that's really nice. This is split down to different countries. I don't want to bore you, but I'm just so fascinated to see that more and more people are looking for us. And I think that's just great. Yeah. So and one output we had from one of our STSMs of the short-term scientific missions is a paper of Daniel Castelli and Lisa Borg. They were on short-term scientific missions between Belgium, Löwen and London, the UK. So they are in Kasimasi Group. And no, no, it was Maastricht, Löwen and London. And yeah, and Daniel is in Adnast Group. And I think that's really nice. So this is the first STSM output paper. And those of you who were involved in the action, I wanted to remind that if you sum up anything which was born during the action based on an STSM, please be so kind and acknowledge the Coast Action in the acknowledgements section. Thank you very much. So this is the first STSM output. And now a few words regarding the output of the genetics and epigenetics people. So in collaboration, so the group of Javier Santos, in collaboration with our group, actually was Christina Martinez, who joined after the first Genua session, after the starting meeting in Bologna, my group. So this was really a win-win, I think, Javier. And we are really proud that we got out a very, very nice publication out of that effort, of that joint effort, which was published at the beginning of the year in GUT. And it even got a commentary, which is also very nice. So I will report on that tomorrow, in the session tomorrow morning. And now, I'd like to draw your attention to three posters, which we will present during the poster session 05 today. So if you are interested, just stop by and have a look. This one, this work is also a microRNA-related and serotonin receptor-related. And it's currently in revision, fingers crossed. And you can see from the author list, there were also quite some people all over Europe involved here. And another one, a joint venture between the Bergen Group in Norway and my group in Heidelberg, we will have another poster about microRNA profiling in biopsy samples from post-infectious patients. And this is also to be presented today as a poster. And the paper is in preparation. And another story about the serotonin transporter is currently wrapped up. And there is another poster also in the session, poster session 5 today. We are currently having other candidate studies and differential expression studies also in collaboration with the group of Carol Betan in Chile. And so there is quite a lot going on. I'm not going into detail here, but we will update you during the next meetings. And I also like to take the opportunity to make you aware that one of our members, Mauro Damato, now, in the meantime, last year officially launched the Vali jeans initiative. And they were also quite, they are also quite successful. And they have also collaborative projects, where also people from Genua are involved. And they published two papers on two candidate jeans. And I will also address that tomorrow. And I'd like to share with you that currently, the largest GWAS studies ever is ongoing, where also all people who collected DNA so far, also from the Genua action, are involved. And this is under the lead of Mauro Damato. So, and I already told you that we got awarded the LINK award in 2015. And this is about harmonization and implementation of protocols for phenotype genotype characterization to foster pan-European collaborations. And the short name is HELP EU in IBS. And yeah, the aim is to validate these protocols for phenotype in five countries. And in three of them, these are not available. And all of them are not available. And in some of them, just one or two were not available. I can't go very much into detail, but Daisy Yonkers will present that at the UAW in detail. So those of you who are going there can get a detailed insight. But what we wanted to do, what we want to do in a nutshell is to translate and validate the phenotyping tools in the languages where they are not available yet and to implement them into a clinical setting and then to disseminate how we did that. Because this is also a process which had to be standardized. You cannot just go there and translate something and give it to a patient and then assume that everything is pretty clear. So this is really a sophisticated procedure. And I see Amis Babel sitting here. Thank you so much, because you were so kind to support us in this. Yeah, because he's an expert and he's involved in the Rome Committee in this kind of procedures. And we are really proud to have you on board and that you expressed interest to help us here. And actually, these are the phenotyping tools. And you can also find them on the website. I'm going to go through this list. It's about phenotyping of GI symptoms, but also of comorbid symptoms. And involved are the Netherlands and Germany as lead organizations. So it's actually the Maastricht Group, Daisy Yonkers is taking care of that. But it's Adnast Group and me, we wrote the application and it worked also Bosnia-Herzegovina, Malta, Norway and Serbia. And yeah, Amis Babel's Berber is helping us with the translational stuff. And he's had the Rome Translational Project. And all crucial societies are also involved in that. And so far, I'm running out of time here, because we started late. What we did, the current status is that we now have all the translations in place. And we are now doing the localization into the different languages, like for example Bosnia and Serbia, and they are quite similar, but there has to be local adoption still in collaboration with Amis Berber. And what we are also doing in the near future is then to disseminate the complete, yeah, the complete plan, how we did everything and also to test it in a clinical setting. So we are currently here. And we are, yeah, we are a little bit behind schedule, but I'm quite optimistic that we are able to manage everything in time. I'm a little bit, yeah, a little bit behind the schedule, but I think we'll be able to manage that. We don't, yeah, lose too much time out, be finished very soon. Yeah. And we are also planning in the end to disseminate what we've done. And we will do that via certain channels, via national societies, but also international societies. And yeah, this was it in a nutshell, what the LINK project is about. And with this, I'd like to hand over to Jona Yalanka, who was so kind to take over the duty to update the pilot study of the microbiota.
Good morning, everybody. So I would like to present you our pilot study about the microbiota. There we go. So the aim of our idea was that then we wanted to kind of understand how the different variations in the patients' gastrointestinal motility and the difference in their symptoms will affect the sampling, that whether we should sample the IBS patients, is it enough to sample them only once? And whether we, at that set time point, hit the symptoms of that day have diarrhea or whether they have constipation or whether they happen to have a normal day and whether that will have an effect on the microbiota analysis. So we tackled that by Daisy Yonkers recruited as part of their running trial, 20 IBS patients and then matched them with 20 controls. And they all filled their own three criteria and the health controls were, well, healthy. And then we sampled them. At the inclusion, we took their diet, so monitored their diet. We didn't monitor their diet every day, because of the, well, it's very kind of job. It's a big job to fill in this questionnaire. So it only was filled in the beginning of the trial, at the inclusion. Then we sampled these healthy individuals and IBS patients daily. Or if they were constipated, as many samples as they could provide. And also, if they had a bad diarrhea day, they would give us extra samples for those days. So every time they had to go to a toilet, they basically provided us with a sample. And also, they filled in these mentioned questionnaires of whether they had symptoms. And they filled the stool diary every day. So we started by reapproaching 90 IBS patients and then collected, ended up with this 12, which was our endpoint, really. And then what we did with this, excuse me, with these samples that we, in Helsinki University, where I'm from, we extracted the DNA and handed it over to be analyzed with phylogenetic microarray. And then the same extracted DNA was sent into Barcelona to be sequenced for 16S. And here's now example of what their symptom diaries looked like for the, this is now for the first patients. 12 patients, FNM meaning the gender, and then next one in the brackets is the age of that particular patient. And you can see that there's a lot of symptoms which are here set in with red color. And then also, they reported their Bristol stool scale and showing that they have abnormal symptoms. So for that week, we were managed to hit quite many patients where they had all the mating symptoms, which was our goal. And this is the same chart for the healthy individuals. There was one that had some symptoms. We don't quite know why, but then, and there were also quite a lot of variation on that person's Bristol stool scale. But for the rest of them, they were quite normal. So I'm going to show you very preliminary data, because we just got the sequencing and heat chip done not too long ago. For the sequencing, we sequenced all of the samples, which is now almost 150 samples. We sequenced the V4 region of the variable of the 16S RNA. And so that was about nine, eight million, which is on average, and this is what you normally get from the sequencing analysis for the microbiota. And for the heat chip array, it's a different technology, kind of analyzing the same molecule, but in a phylogenetic microarray setting. And it was successful. There's no kind of statistics for that for me to provide, but we only analyzed 20 of these patients, also all of the patients, and then only some of them held individuals. And this is now showing the alpha diversity, so diversity in the microbiota from day one, running from day one to day five. And then these are some of the extra samples that they provided if they had very severe. if they had very severe diarrhea. And you can see from KO and Shannon indexes, which are now kind of different matrices of assessing the microbiota variation there, or diversity. And you can see that there's hardly any difference, that's normal variation there. And what we could also see that there was, on red are the IBS patients, oh, I'm sorry, it's very bad figure here, looks better on my screen, and on blue are the healthy controls. And what I would like you to get from this figure is that they go, there's no separation, basically. But that wasn't our point, that's what we were kind of expecting in this small trial. But what was apparent, which is very typical for the microbiota research, is that then, all the samples clustered by subjects, because we have very individual microbiota, so all of our microbiota are unique. So then, that's very typical, what you expect to see in that trial. And there wasn't that much variation. There are some samples that are kind of separating, that they don't cluster very tightly, which would indicate then that there's variation in the microbiota at that time point. But that detailed kind of analysis is still to come. So this is what we wanted to conclude, that there wasn't that much day-to-day variation, which is a good result. This is what we wanted to find, because we didn't want to end up to the, that we have to sample the patients several times for a microbiota clinical trial to be successful. But that has not been stated, so that's something that was really needed in the field. And that we stated, I showed that then the microbial community clusters by subjects rather than the symptoms, and that we're, the proper microbial and by infant analysis is still to come. Right, that's what I wanted to say for that.
Thank you very much, Yona, especially on short notice, stepping in and giving us that update. Thanks very much. Okay, so now we have the update of the genetics group, of the microbiota working group, and now it's mine, again, the great pleasure to introduce to you Professor Dan Drujasko, from Cluj, in Romania, who will introduce you of an idea which was born recently.
Yes, and, where's the microphone?
You don't need it.
Yeah, I did, I will not have the passion and the style of Beate, but I'd like to present a proposal, and as she said, origin, right? The idea came very late, in March, me and my friend Basile Drug, we organized our periodical neuro-gastro meeting, and considering that I was also active, and still am working in the International Isom Committee of the Rome Foundation, we organized for the first time a regional Rome IV meeting for Central and East European countries. And one of the speakers was Beate, and then she made, like Einstein, she put two axioms together, and the idea to include countries from East Europe to a next, to a next proposal of continuation for COAST. And this is really not easy. We meditated several times, we corresponded, also with some other colleagues, but it would be really nice to develop her idea, who was so successful and well-known now across the world. And therefore, we should try to create a new network to unravel new aspects on IBS. And I would say even for another functional gastric intestinal disorders. And well, to improve also the methodology to approach this. But the problem is not easy, because first, as you mentioned, functional disorders are not life-threatening, and most of the applications are rejected. It's not cancer, it's not IBD. On the other hand, we'll compete, the COAST proposals are accepted in a rate of less than 10%, I believe 7% or so. It's very, very, very competitive project. So we would have the staff, so beside people who are now involved in COAST, we extend some East countries' work also in the first, in the COAST program, but we could bring new countries, this to Belarus, Russia, and Moldova, are not member of UEG, and I wonder, but probably it's nothing bad to accept them also in the program.
It's possible.
It's possible. And the problem is, what to tackle? Because submissions need to respect some rules. And all of the rule is to not duplicate a previous study, to bring really new progress in knowledge, or even to have applications, practical applications, like innovations, patents of invention and so on. And that's not easy for our working groups. These are some suggestions that we propose to continue working, but again, no referral to Genia, nor refer to other projects or similar projects, but to be really an independent project. And we could tackle these problems, for instance, on these working parties, or even more or less, trying to find differences and conceptual interventions, and assessment of differences in the participating country. So there is the idea. Important for us that what is not too much, in fact, is intercultural or trans-cultural or cross-cultural differences. This is related to epidemiology data, and I see I'm in the room, but also to the perception. There are differences in personality report of symptoms. For instance, for instance, studies showing that in China or in Romania, catastrophizing has higher scores than Italy. Or difference, I think, that should be uncovered if they exist. And then cross-cultural differences is an idea. But again, probably we should go also to genetical mechanism and other mechanisms, maybe also microbiota, but without repeating Genia. No chance to duplicate or to make a new project. And if we look for cross-cultural differences in IBS, it's a suggestion. But we are absolutely very flexible. We didn't accelerate working on this, because we have to well meditate on what we want to do. On the other hand, it was summertime, and many institutions do not work full-time, and it's hard to get the agreements and the signatures. On the other hand, I know exactly that this psychosomatic project, very competitive, who will be submitted, was rejected, or will be submitted again to the deadline in September. And therefore, to the next deadline that we still do not have yet, we should prepare a good project. My fellow Alexandra Kira, who was also in Genia, suggested some titles, the problem will not remain to this. But again, the idea is to emphasize cross-cultural differences in Europe in functional gastric intestinal disorders. But again, we are open to any other ideas. And deliverable, so we create a new network, social media actions, publications, and of course, recommendations and public statements. Deadline is not well-known, but, so the application deadline is not public now on the COAST inside. But we think to work on this in this autumn, and to circulate drafts in order to be ready for the next application. This year, to my knowledge, was in June, and now is in 7th September. And I think we should work on this in this autumn. But again, please address to us any of your opinions. Weak points is novelty is not so known. Utility, anybody could say, is not so useful. Significance, I consider it's good, but we have to emphasize the significance, work also with psychologists and psychosomatists, and to avoid similarities with other projects done by psychiatrists or psychosomatists. And suggestions should be sent either to me or to Beate, and we meet each other, we meet again in Barcelona soon, and so on. This was the opinion and my reaction to the proposal of Beate. So I think we can stop here now, but if you agree, we can, we can accept any suggestion from you.
Yeah, maybe we could discuss it now, Dan.
Yes.
Yeah, we still have a little bit of time.
Not too much.
So are there any opinions on that? Who would be interested to be part of such kind of action?
Thank you, Adam.
Now, the thing is, what, when I joined your meeting, which was really a very nice meeting, where a lot of Eastern European countries' representatives took place, I realized that there is not really a lot known regarding function. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but there are not a lot of studies being carried out, and there is just very, very limited knowledge on that. And I think we could really support here and help each other out to improve the situation also for the clinical colleagues in these countries. And of course, there also, again, most of the, I think part of the problem is really that standardized questionnaires are really missing there, because they are simply just not available. In Europe, we have a different situation compared to the US, for example. Everyone there speaks English. In Europe, we have these different, I don't know, 30-something countries, which are, most of them are speaking totally different languages, and this is an issue there. And I think it would be really good also to address that. Implementation of questionnaires in international languages, this on its own, I think would be something which would be of course very important. Yeah.
I agree.
I have just a question, and from the other, I work with the commission, and we have a project funded on IBS. In terms of cultural, cultural, what they choose, do you mean like Italian versus Caucasian? Or, I mean, what type of segregation, segregation, that word? And grouping of people in terms of culture? Because like, if at the museum, we have the boundary, we have the American part of Caucasian, so...
Well, good question. Anyway, there are international variations that we could, using different psychological assessments, that it's obvious, it's well-known, yeah. You may say it's not so relevant, it could be. Now we assist to the mixture of the population. But I think it deserves to be investigated, and this globalization with migration trends, and probably they also should be addressed too, because they are also associated with post-traumatic stress syndrome, and with the loss of social support.
Okay, I would just, in answer to this, there's a chapter in the Rome IV textbook called "Cross-cultural differences in the ID", and I think that pretty much covers a lot of what I'm learning.
So I think we should support that, because IBS is a global problem. It's not a matter of, I think, we have problems in Africa as well. It's a lot of problems in IBS, and I also have some differences. But I think it's important for our group to support this.
So what follows would be to receive, well, additions, letters, emails, and also suggestions. We really need suggestions, because the fruit is not just ready.
Yeah, we are still brainstorming.
Yeah, correct.
We're like this, we said, "Meditating, brainstorming." And so any volunteers, suggestions, and want to support us here, please let us know. Are there any other questions from the audience?
Um, yes. Sorry. Can you refresh my memory about the conception? So does that mean when a country join, they have to put money in? Or it's purely a network basis?
Yeah, thanks for asking this.
Because you should, you would get money if you run the network, or the one...
Yeah, so that's an excellent question. Actually, the COAST program, the CoSIS and abbreviation for Cooperation in Science and Technology, and it's run by the COAST Association, that is in the frame of Horizon 2020 now. And these are pure networking actions. So you get money for, in the first place, to have the opportunity to invite people, to invite speakers, to have to run the meetings. Because every meeting is of course, a lot of costs are created. You have to fly in, people, and everyone involved in the COAST gets the travel money. What I can share with you is, of course, we always try to make most out of it. So we always had our COAST action meetings in conjunction with other international meetings. So there, this was always been the situation, that's what it's like. But it's basically, you're totally right, there is no research money involved. And but it's already a great opportunity to be able to provide money that people can fly in, that we could sit together and brainstorm, and come up with all what we also did in our action. And a certain chunk is also reserved for training and education. So we were able to have two training schools, and also these short-term scientific missions. We had 20 other COAST actions that take even more money for that. And you can, a trainee in this program can get up to 3,500 euros for the daily living costs. So, yeah, it's also no research money, but it enables people to go somewhere, to learn certain technique. And I think this is just a great opportunity, where we make use of it. If you have any ideas to build another COAST action on whatever topic, go for it. Because it's really great, and you can really create something out of it. A critical mass of people, because a big advantage of all, I realize, even though we failed so far within the Horizon 2020 program, we are already a bunch of people who know each other very well. We know where we want to go, this is a big, big advantage. And we don't feel, because we are not good enough, we just say, "This is my statement here," and then I hope stop, because it's still neglected, and it's not really taken seriously, and this has to change for us all. And with this, I'm at the end. Thanks very much for joining. And our next meeting is planned to take place at the International, at the Federation of Gastro Meeting, which will take place at August 29th of September, 1st next year in Amsterdam. Thank you very much for joining.